Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, March 6th of 2017, to the City Council Work Session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order, and the first one will be Roger, you're up, for Roger Foot, for a discussion on the phosphorus removal facility. So, the floor is yours, buddy.
Can you turn your mic on? Is it on?
Is that on?
Okay.
Is that better?
Yep.
Um, as you know, the Upper Big Sioux Project has been operating a phosphorus removal facility on Capeska. Three years of experimentation in removing phosphates from the lake, using algae as a medium. Um, we've had very mixed results with that over the years, but the most important thing, I think, is what we've learned. Now, we've learned what the limitations are of such a system, and we've learned that in order to really make a huge difference to the lake, that we're gonna have to have a bigger system in place to do that. To give you an idea of what the lake is looking like right now, excuse me, uh, the current phosphorus level is .59 milligrams per liter. Current lake nitrogen level is .02. Excuse me again, I went out and did water testing last week, before the ice started getting really lousy, and on the east end of the lake, the nitrate levels that I've tested in my office have not confirmed that with State Health Lab yet, is still being processed, is .24 milligrams per liter. What this works out is that as the lake has come up a good one foot from the river water, that's 1.6 billion gallons of water in that one foot. With the concentration of .24 milligrams per liter of nitrogen, nitrogen has been very deficient in the lake over the past few years. That's why, one of the reasons why the lake has been so clear, is because nitrogen hasn't been there to feed the aquatic plants and algae's in the lake. The phosphorus is still there, it doesn't go away. As the plants use it, they do their thing, they die off, that gets re-released back into the water. So with the 3,000 pounds of nitrogen that has come in, just with that one foot of water, if you use a 15 to 1 nitrogen to phosphorus ratio, that's gonna eat up 200 pounds of phosphorus. That sounds great, however, that 200 pounds of phosphorus will grow up to 64,000 pounds of algae. Everyone remembers last year, when the ice went out, the lake was so clear, you could see fish in the bottom, everyone was just ecstatic about that. It ain't gonna be that way this year. Um, I have with me a Sechi disc, Sechi disc, however you wanna pronounce that. It's a simple tool that we use for physical observations of the water column. On the west end of the lake, last week, I sat this on the bottom, in 10 feet of water, and can see it just as clear as you can see it now. On the east end of the lake, oh, in the, say the Jackson Park area, not even close to the inlet, barely a foot, foot and a half at the most, and you couldn't see this disc at all. Another interesting observation is the oxygen levels on the east end of the lake, or I'm sorry, the west end of the lake, the levels were .8, or I'm sorry, 8 milligrams per liter, which is not a bad number. On the east end of the lake, where we got very little visibility, it was over 18 milligrams per liter. That's a huge number, and that sounds great, however, something is producing this oxygen, and I will tell you right now, is when the ice goes off, the lake will be green, because it's all the diatoms and the algae that are eating this nutrient, the nitrates, combining it with the phosphates, and they're going crazy right now. So that's, that's the doom and gloom. We are not gonna have a clear as lake as we did last year. Now, let's see. That brings me to this proposal, been working on it for over a year now. I've included a copy with the documentation for this meeting. If anyone would like a hard copy, I did bring a few. Just let me know. Um, I'm sure you've all read through it. Basically, this is our system that we have existing at an industrial scale. These people I've been working with, I could probably do what they're doing, but I would need five more years and a fairly unlimited budget to match the technologies that they've come up with. Nobody likes to give me an unlimited budget. So, uh, what I would like to do, now this, this system, I believe, is affordable. It has, uses fewer chemicals, limited waste stream, and there is a potential for cost recovery on it as well, at least as much as operating costs annually. What I would like to do is, is put this on the capital improvement plan, perhaps for 18, perhaps for 19. This is kinda where you guys come in, and what you feel is, is necessary. The cost of this system, 40,000 for a preliminary engineering report, where their engineers will come in, take a look at the facility, and do a detailed analysis of what needs to be changed, what we can use, what we can't use, and what it would cost to, to modify this thing.
Roger, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, this particular one that you're showing us right here, am I understanding it correctly? When you said, uh, we had like 3,000 pounds of phosphorus come into the lake with our 12 inches?
Uh, 3,000 pounds of nitrogen.
Nitrogen, and then how does that compare to what you were just showing us, that it'll remove, and go to the next slide, this would remove 600 to 1,200 pounds P, what, is that phosphorus?
P is phosphorus.
Okay.
And the relationship is algae uses more nitrates than phosphates. The idea is to capture the phosphates, the things that don't go away. As you've seen with the water in the lake, over the last three or four years, the amount coming in has been less and less and less, and last year, there was none.
Right.
The existing nitrates in the lake have gone through that nitrate cycle, and have eventually, evaporated, so to speak. They, they went to ammonia, and then they dissipated back into the atmosphere. So the nitrates are gone, but the phosphates remain. The only way to really stop it is to trap the phosphates, which don't go away, and this system will take out 600 to 1,200 pounds per year, um, to stop...
Does, does it seem, does it seem odd that your facility currently, that you're taking phosphates out now, am I correct?
Correct.
That the highest level of that is over, kinda right by your plant? Does that seem odd, or am I, am I wrong in assuming that?
Um, the reason why I took the samples near the plant, because it was the easiest place to access the lake. I also drilled holes on the other side of the lake by Capeska Lodge, and the same water clarity on that side as well. So that whole eastern end of the lake is mixing in with that water coming in now.
Thank you.
Roger, I'm trying to get my arms around the sciences too. I mean, let's say that we, we bite the bullet, spend the dollars, we remove the whatever number of pounds per year, and all of a sudden, we get a massive event that just brings in, you know, a couple feet of water, I mean, just overnight. What, what, what does that do to what we've just done relative to removing the phosphorus?
Does it set us back to square one? No, because of the accumulative effect, we get one bad event, but then we have four, five, 10 years of decent events that we can keep up with and keep ahead of. In this scenario, the 200 pounds of phosphorus that will be used by the 3,000, or matched with the 3,000 pounds of in, we could easily remove that and keep ahead of that cycle.
Roger, overall, say, say we get, we did this, and, and we, we implemented this particular system over a period of time, what would we expect the results to be? And what, what benefits evolved from that?
Right now, the lake is classified as hyper eutrophic. Um, sorry, that's a scientific term for extremely active, um, very nutrient-rich, produces lots of, of, of plants, algae. Um, it, it goes in cycles, those years where we have good water clarity, we'll have lots of plant growth. People call them weeds, and they'll complain about that, on years that we don't have good clarity, that's because we have algae growth, and then people will complain of that as well. In August of 16, did a current nutrient analysis, and by the numbers on this scale, like, as clear as it was, it actually brought our trophic class status down to eutrophic, which is a little less than maximum. This year, I'm sure it'll bounce back up again. As these clarity levels are reached, I'm sorry, am I being too scientific? Basically, the clearer the lake is, the better the use is of the lake, the more people will want to use it, and the more pleased they will be, and the further they will travel to come here to, to utilize the lake.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you again, 'cause I, I just wanna know, is it better for the fish? Is it gonna be more attractive? And what, what actually, what are the benefits that we will see, the public would see, from doing this outside, having some algae and cloudy water? What else would, would happen?
Yes, to all the above.
One of the things too, I think, if I may step in quickly, uh, it's better for them, and when you go swimming, when you come out, you wouldn't be green.
There have been years when that has happened.
Well, then, by all means, let's spend the money, and...
Yes, it will be better for the fisheries.
Maybe in green.
Okay, I didn't need that, thank you. All right, so I kinda lost my train of thought. What was your question?
My, my question, and I think Brad asked about the fisheries, would it improve the fishery, but what, what are the ultimate benefits of having a system in place like this for a period of time, when it's functioning as you would like it to function?
The clarity of the water would be the biggest benefit. With, as we bring those nutrient levels down, the lake itself will reach a better balance between the plants that are growing, the algae that grows, we won't have major swings between algae blooms and massive plant growth. Things will reach a better balance, the quality of the water will increase, you won't have to worry about your dog getting into any toxic algae. Um, there'll probably even be, be less E. coli events, because the animals will stay further out from the shoreline, shorelines. It's what we've been targeting for, for the last 20 years, to, to improve that quality of the water.
What would, what would your end goal be? I mean, what do you really, what's your goal that you wanna see in five years or 10 years by doing this? Didn't you show me two systems, one at this price, one substantially larger?
Yes, we, this isn't the only thing that we've looked at. We did get a proposal from Clark Engineering on a diaphragm filtration type system, more of a mechanical removal. They do have filters that will take out dissolved phosphorus particles, extremely small. However, the, the price of that system at this scale is about twice the price of what I'm proposing tonight.
And then you also mentioned early in your conversation about the cost, you said that by having this, there really, you could almost offset it equally of your expenses of something, what are you selling this stuff?
There is a market for algae. Um, just came across my Facebook feed a couple days ago. They are promoting the use of algae-based water bottles, so that they decompose in a couple of years. Uh, when I went to the algae biomass organizations conference a couple years ago, there was a firm I spoke to in Georgia that will buy anything that they can possibly get their hands on, just to manufacture biodegradables. The, this company has a few lines of opportunities and possibilities to sell this stuff, anywhere from 13 cents to 50 cents to a dollar a pound of dry mass. That will offset a, a good portion of the operate, annual operating costs.
So, so if you think this, I'm sorry, Don, go ahead.
How do you ship it? Is you dry it out and grind it up, or how, how economical is that?
Algae, the algae that we're playing with is about 90% water, so it would be separated and dried onsite, and then it could be bagged and shipped.
Is that an additional mechanism for us to dry it? Is that something else we'd have to have, or we do that anyway?
That's supposed to be included in the entire system, is disposing of the algae.
Have you had a chance, Roger, uh, are there, I mean, I, I know you, we've been cutting you off, you haven't had a chance to go through the, the big dollars up there, but are there state or federal dollars, available grants of some sort, that would help pay for getting such a system in place?
Gee, how do you answer that? Um, the way that the current administration is threatening the EPA grant funds from that direction, we probably should not count on them. I've heard of rumors, of course, anywhere from 30% to 70% cuts to that department, and as you know, a lot of our funding comes through the EPA, through the DNR. Statewide, statewide, that is a possibility, I have not approached them yet, but I am pretty sure that they will turn around and say that Watertown's gotta have a lot of skin in the game before they wanna contribute to that as well.
I'd like one more question here, if I may.
Sure.
Um, do we, do you have any other communities that, that have done this, or different lakes that have, okay, that, that shows these, or the results over time?
This company has not worked with the lake before, however, they have done industrial and sewage treatment plants, um, Missoula, Montana, a place in Washington. I haven't toured any of these, but from what I've read online, they're happy with the systems. There's four sewage treatment plants and one wood pulp paper mill that uses, that's been using the system consistently.
What are we looking at right there?
This is a picture I swiped off the internet, sorry.
But, but I mean, what is it?
It is a bio-reactor. Um, this thing can be configured to look pretty much like anything. Uh, the system that they're proposing looks more like this, but yes, I, I could see where we could put a gr, big green tower on top of the old water treatment plant, and welcome the Watertown sign. If you so desire, we can, we can put lights in it, but I'm sure the neighbors won't appreciate that.
Roger, that last slide you showed says you can do 600 to 1,200 pounds, how come there's such, isn't that a big variance?
Um, what they've done is they've given us two options. One at 33.33 million gallons per day of water treated, and then doubled that. So what I've been asking for is the 600 pounds, just to keep everyone on the same page, you know, that's a requirement, can you do 600 pounds? And yes, they say they can. And the water that I've sent them in barrels, they've shown me the lab work, independent lab work, that says that they can do that, up to 94, 95% efficiency rate. The 1,200 is if they double their system to show us the difference, the economy of scale. If they want, if we want to double the size of the system, it will not double the price, and then we would be able to achieve those goals in 10 years instead of 20. So overall, long-term, it would be a, a cost savings.
Roger, I think you mentioned this, but how much is coming in per year on an average?
That's a tough question to answer as well, without my spreadsheets. Anywhere from, from nothing to hundreds of pounds. It, it all depends on the runoff and, and how fast we get it. I can get that to you, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that with me.
Okay, Roger. So let's say we start dredging the lake and going into that phosphorus and start stirring that up. Is that gonna have any effect on, on that?
That'll make life difficult for a while, that's, that's definitely true. When, uh, when they, we put in the, the new inlet for the, the golf course irrigation system, the total suspended solids in the plant just went through the roof. I, I believe I got a nasty gram from the state for that. So any, any type of, yes, sir, you, you saw that, you can attest. Um, so anytime you do any bottom manipulation, yes, there is an issue. Um, in my researching dredging options, the state will require some sort of sediment control with that, so there, that's a whole nother conversation. And please stop by my office, I'd love to explore that with you.
Yeah, I think we do, we do need more information from you, Roger. I know at first, at first blush, I think everybody's gonna say, wow, that's an expensive thing, but if we can break it down, and it just kinda drill in, drill, drill down into that a little bit, so we understand it better, I think.
What I, this, me coming before you today was just to kinda give you a heads up of what I'm thinking, to let you know that this possibility is there. I can invite the, the people from the company to come and speak to you directly, so you're not getting me as the middleman, so don't fiddle anything up. So if you'd like me to schedule that, I, I definitely will.
Yeah, I don't think that would hurt. I think anything we can do, you know, if we can do it, it wouldn't hurt to, to hear more about it, and we can devote a little more time for it. So thank you very much for being here today, and just one last question, where's the lake level right now?
Um, as of this morning, we are 20 inches below full.
And where did we start at?
Uh, we started at 36 inches below full a month or so ago.
Perfect. Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number three, review the 2016 MS4 Annual Report and related documentation and Storm Water Management Program updates. Shane, it's, uh, it's now the Shane Show.
All right.
I've been waiting all day.
Brad, you wanna open that window up a little bit? It's kinda warm in here, I think.
Shane Show is almost like Howdy Doody, you know? Um, yeah. Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm not as good-looking as Howdy Doody though, so. All right, so our, annually, we, the city is required to, uh, complete a annual report of our MS4 program. We've, we evaluate the previous year's, um, events and, and provide that information to the state, and then they also, um, comment on it, and so what I have up on the screen is the summary of their findings of our 2015 report, um, and then they make comments for us to improve our program in 2016 and, and so forth. So, um, reviewing the 2015 report, the state's comments is, the city has not developed or required procedures for assessing and evaluating the IDDE, which is illicit discharge, um, portion of our program. And so what we did is we, we took these comments and we updated our program, and I'll show you more on that later. We needed to improve our standard operating procedures, that's what the SOP stands for in the manual, to include procedures for evaluating and assessing illicit discharge plan. Updating the SOP manual was stated as a goal in the 2013, 14, and 15 annual reports, but has not been completed. We did complete that this year. Another comment was the 2016 Storm Water Management Plan included BMPs for construction site runoff control that were not completed. These BMPs consisted of providing educational opportunities for contractors and providing training to staff members. We have, uh, been getting, uh, training for staff men, members, um, so we're update on that, and, uh, we do have comments on the educational piece from the contractors, and I'll explain that a little bit later, how, how we're handling that. Another comment was, there is no formal database to track the program activities discussed in the annual report. I, again, will go through that, so. With that, I will flip through our report and show you where we made comments to, um, address these. Let's see. Here, if you look on this box, here's where our, one of our responses are, our standard operating procedures was revised on 3/6/17 to identify the appropriate responses, positions, and include the procedure for evaluating and assessing the plan. Part of those updates, a lot of our references were to, uh, different administrative, or, or, uh, actual job titles, um, making, making reference to, um, a planning and zoning, or, or, um, or the Public Works Director, and we don't, I mean, the mayor is the official Public Works Director in title, but in operation, he, he doesn't wanna oversee these things, so he delegates to me. So what we did is we changed the language to be a little bit more appropriate to administrative official. So he, he designates that administrative official, and, uh, most likely, it'll remain with the engineer's office. So, just little procedural things like that, that we're working on to kinda clean things up, make it a little easier. Ask questions whenever you have a, have a question, 'cause if I speed through this and I've gotten past it, it'll take me a minute to get back to it. So, here again, um, this is some of our responses. Uh, standard and operating procedure manual for illicit discharge detection and elimination will be revised to include procedures for evaluating and assessing the illicit discharge plan. So our goal was to update the illicit discharge standard operating procedures manual to be in compliance by December 16. We actually did the update in March of 2017, so, or, or that's when we're implementing it, I should say. We, we actually did the verbiage here a short time ago. Here again, goals were not completed in 2016, provide an explanation why the goal was not met, and the new implementation schedule for meeting the goal. So our response was, the mapping changes were not fully incorporated in 2016 due to workload limitations, but the goal will be to catch up with that updates in 2017. So we'll go forward and make, make the program better. Here again, was another comment, for the goals that were not completed in 2016, provide an explanation why the goal was not met, and the new implementation schedule for meeting the goal. So, again, our response, goal of providing educational opportunities for contractors by providing training and/or mailing was not met. However, each building permit issued was accompanied by an informational flyer, so the goal was met via a different method, or BMP, we call that. And the goal has been modified in the Storm Water Management Program to add this BMP. So we're actually giving information to contractors and/or developers in a different format than what our original plan showed, so the information's getting to them, it's just not in a formal training, in other words, we don't hold an event that invites everybody in and has a big, you know, to-do and a, a schedule and a class, but we haven't ruled that out, and we certainly might be able to get to that goal here.
So you'd offer a class as well, perhaps?
Right, or, or kind of a workshop-type seminar, where we invite them in and show them what, what's working, what's not working in the community, and see if what, if we can get them engaged in making it better, I guess. So that's really, uh, going through the, uh, our annual report, and then I just wanna point out one other thing related to that, and here's where, um, the, the other part of your packet was an actual exert, or the actual Storm Water Management Program, and we made revisions in March 6th of 2017. Again, a lot of that was administrative things, um, and we did highlight the changes in yellow. If anybody has any questions on those, I, I don't know that I wanna go page, page through this, uh, document, but, uh, anyway, we, we did simplify things a little bit, as far as some of the verbiage, but our goal's still to meet the, uh, program and make the state satisfied with our report. Questions?
I've got one question. How, how time-consuming is this report and, you know, everything that underlies it? I guess the reason I'm asking the question is, I, I know we've had some recent staffing changes, and is this something that, because it is an annual report, that we're gonna be on top of going forward?
Yeah, we, I mean, a lot of that program stuff is done, um, like, for instance, we'll, we'll submit this report to the DNR, and they'll evaluate it. We won't get comments back until mid, mid to late summer at the earliest, and then we, um, you know, we'll spend that time responding to whatever questions. This isn't, I mean, this has been an ongoing program since 2007, so the changes and the tracking hasn't changed a lot over that time. I mean, they always keep moving the bar a little bit, and we just keep adjusting the program to stay in line with what I mean, they always keep moving the bar a little bit, and we just keep adjusting the program to stay in line with what they're asking for. So with that said, I mean, it's not a major, uh, staffing change that would be required here and, and we'll, we'll be able to manage it.
I don't think there's any other questions, Shane. Thank you for that.
I, I will be asking for action, um, at the regular council session for the mayor to sign this report, so we can submit it to the state.
Perfect.
And that has to be done by the end of the week.
And this really is, is what, you know, and when this was implemented, this is why we have the water retention ponds that we do. This is why we put up the, the barriers, you know, just to hold the silt back, different things like that. This is, uh, really the, a cause and effect of the whole process of that, so. All right, thank you, Shane. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Number four, discussion on ordinance number seventeen thirteen, removing chapter seven point one three of the revised ordinance to dissolve the civic and recreation board and place the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center under the park and rec board. This is, um, something that it's, it's quite interesting how this, how this really came about. This isn't something that, uh, was planned by any means, Justin, and, and I'm going to allow you to, to discuss this for us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, this was something unexpected. Uh, the mayor had asked me to kind of take a look at the lay of the land statutorily, ordinance wise, with the, uh, transition to Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. In the process, I did some research in the chapter in our state code, uh, related to parks and recreation. There are actually two separate hats, if you will, one parks, one recreation. But per that state law, that, that compendium of state law, first-class municipalities like Watertown are empowered to combine those two authorities into one board as it has done with the Parks and Recreation Board. In the process, I came to discover really why we have a separate or have, and, and soon, uh, depending upon what the council decides, uh, might not have this separate recreation board for the Watertown Recreation Center. And the reason for that is because this board was created at a time when the Watertown Recreation Center was housed in a joint-use facility with, uh, space that is or was at the time and is currently owned by the Watertown School District, namely the Civic Arena. So because there were two political subdivisions of the state that were in control, if you will, owning certain parts of this structure, uh, the city's forebears found it prudent to create a separate, uh, body, if you will, under SDCL chapter forty-two dash two, to operate this joint-use facility. So the memo that came with this proposal lays out the statutory basis for this change and why it is, it appears to be necessary to make this change. Quite simply, South Dakota codified law requires that recreational facilities be under the recreation board. In Watertown's case, that's the Park and Recreation Board. And, uh, the only reason why it wasn't was because of a unique circumstance with the joint-use facility. Now that that circumstance is gone, or will be gone here in a month, uh, there is now no need for the recreation center's current board to exist.
Right, and, and I want to add just a couple of words to that, so you all understand what's going on. And I'm just going to, I'm going to just touch base on it a little bit. You know, we had the two entities. Uh, it was all good and well until we went out on our own without the school, then that actually made that board illegal. We'll put this under the park and rec board, which is good and fine. Uh, I think that'll be no problem, but I do think that it's important that we create or keep an advisory board for the rec center, which just kind of really works with that, that rec center, you know, because we have a lot going on there. And, and it will be, in that aspect, an advisory board who will then advise to the park and rec board on things going on. Does that make sense to all you guys? So that being said, if there's any questions for Justin, uh, you're sure welcome to ask them.
I do have one, um, and this goes to the mayor as well. What is the process, our current process for recruiting or for any type of vetting that we might do for, uh, uh, park and rec board members? How are they selected? Is it strictly by the mayors?
No.
How do we do that?
Absolutely not. What happens is, is that the park and rec board, uh, they actually have suggestions that they bring to the mayor. The mayor then actually, uh, looks through those and talks to most of those individuals and then brings it in front of the council. And you actually, through, uh, through a voting process, approve that person on the board. I do think that with bringing on this new body, the board is going to change up, uh, substantially its looks, in, in my opinion. Because I think there's, there's a whole new aspect that has to be brought to the table. So that's kind of how the board is, is, um, put together. Any other questions? Thank you, Justin. I think it's, uh, something that we have to do. It's not if we want to or not, right?
I do have one quick question, Steve, before you get done there. Has there been any, I know there's been talk, or, and maybe it can be implemented throughout this, this same board of some sort of athletic committee, or what do I want to say there? Sports committee, sports committee, I guess, or sports authority or whatever? That could be developed right in within that?
You know, I know there's been talk about a sports authority board in town. I, I, I haven't really seen any, anything of it as of yet. But I know that Julie, the CBB, is looking at the sports authority board. I haven't seen any, any substance of that. So at this particular time, I think with the advisor board going to the park and rec board, we're going to be in pretty good shape on this thing. And then we have, you know, people like John Solom is on that board and, um...
That group might come in a hurry, though, when you have a new facility up there, the softball fields and the, uh, hockey ring. That, that's going to really expand the potential for the sports authority.
I think so. And, and frankly, it's a pretty good idea. You can have a sports authority. Depends on how much authority we give them, you know, if, if it's more of an advisory that goes still to the park and rec. Because we have to, we have to, we, we have to understand that park and rec board is there and it's under, under your SDCL laws that you got.
I think your sports authority is going to basically look at more of the promotion side of it. I think that's why, you know, it's very important to have somebody from CBB on there and, and, uh, but I agree with, with, what Dan said, you know, with all these new facilities, I think we need to spend a lot of money to, to put the facilities together. Now we gotta start putting them to use, put it that way, so.
Exactly.
And just in, in that regard, I just want to mention too, I've had a couple of discussions with Julie Knudsen. Uh, and, and they have actually have a group they call the sports authority. That's what she's trying, she had a difficulty getting folks to come to the meetings. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was three of us there.
Yeah, so, um, but I, I think that's something we have to push forward on. And I know, I, I just stopped in to visit Gary Young the other day because of the new softball complex. And just wanted to mention that, uh, Gary had said, there's a couple of big tournaments, pretty good-sized tournaments that they intend to bring to, to the new facilities this year. And, and I asked him, I said, would we have had these had we not built this facility? He said, absolutely not. And so, but we do, we have to get on that. We got to get rolling with that right away and try to get, get these tournaments lined up in advance. Some of them you got to plug in, they might be three, four, or five years away, but you, you got to get going on as soon as you can, so.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks, Justin. I think we're going to move on to number five. Here we go. Are you ready on this one? This is discussion on proposed changes to the signing outdoor advertising ordinance. So is this is something that has been worked on for quite some time? Luke, you're here, you can come on up and... Yeah, I seen you, I seen you come dragging in, and then you hide behind that pole.
That's right.
I, I'm onto your trash.
Smooth move. You figured it out.
Yeah. So I'm going to just let you guys, uh, light it up, tell us where we've been, where we're going. And, and I, I know we still have further to go on this, but I'll let you take it.
Well, Mayor, uh, Luke, I think is the brains behind the operation, but he has allowed me to give a few introductory remarks being relatively new to this process. The sign code ordinance, as you had pointed out, Mayor, has been a work in progress for quite some time. And really, I think the roots of this process go back at least three years. There had been discussions, uh, you know, in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen about, um, you know, looking at portable signs and, uh, the impact on the community there. And the city council then adopted in June of two thousand fifteen, as you recall, ordinance fifteen sixteen, which strengthened regulations of portable signs and including an establishment of a ban on off-premise portable signs. Off-premise signs, just for terminology's sake, are generally speaking, another term for billboards or signs not advertising the business on whose premises the signs are located. So conversation started with portable signs, and then the conversation started evolving, uh, I think it's fair to say, to looking at really kind of all forms of off-premise signs. And looking maybe more comprehensively at our sign code ordinance in chapter twenty-one eighty. On January fourth, two thousand sixteen, the city of Watertown adopted a moratorium on off-premise sign applications. And then soon after, the city convened this group, this task force, if you will, of, uh, individuals within city government, um, and, uh, individuals serving on boards, and Luke, uh, experts in the field to kind of look at what changes may be needed to be made to chapter twenty-one eighty. The group has since met at least five times to compile and fine-tune the provisions that you see before you know. As these discussions started up, we started looking at the legal landscape and seeing that, in fact, the S- the US Supreme Court had weighed in on this issue in two thousand fifteen in a fairly large way. Uh, in Town of Gilbert, Arizona v. Reed, the US Supreme Court broadened the scope of what was considered content-based speech prohibitions with regard to signs. You know, signs are an important aspect of speech. And the court, you know, gave its opinion on and, and, uh, its case law on what would constitute an impermissible regulation. We were required to incorporate this decision in our work and place far greater scrutiny on sign regulations as a result. Ultimately, then, the changes that we proposed, or the changes that we were looking at most intently, really fell into three categories. Just put this up here on the projector real quick, if we could. The first priority was to eliminate redundant administrative procedure and other provisions that were contained in the code to sort of streamline it, um, because it's quite long. And even after these revisions, it remains long, but for good reason. The second was to look at the number of signs, and in particular, off-premise signs. Uh, the third concern was to look again at regulating portable signs, what was permissible, what was impermissible. And really, the second and third concerns were driven in large part by that Town of Gilbert versus Reed, uh, US Supreme Court case. Now, you have the language before you here. Obviously, as the mayor pointed out, this isn't the final draft, not even close. There are going to be substantive discussions held with the public, with stakeholders. Uh, the task force mentioned at least two public meetings where, you know, you have folks from the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, from the business community, realtors, land developers, uh, sign businesses within the community, you know, all the major stakeholders that will have a place at the table to discuss this, to really refine the, these regulations down further. Uh, but we figured at least the city council should take the first bite at this. And then, you know, we'd be able to take kind of what the city council has suggested to the public with the idea that we will come back again, go through the formal ordinance process here with the city council. Beyond that, I don't know if there are any prefacing remarks that you have, Luke?
Yeah, what I, I guess, Justin did a fantastic job of explaining procedurally or just the timeframe, how we got there. Uh, simplifying it down a little bit. The, um, the city was going through some issues, concerns with portable signs and billboards. Um, knew that there was an intent or an interest to try and update those regulations. That process was made significantly more difficult due to, um, the national landscape and court cases there. And so that's why we weren't able to just turn around two months, come back to you and say, here we go, this is the right answer. Because there were changes, not only from that, but also things that we've gone through. As Justin mentioned, the procedural, things like that, just things in this community that we've had to do as well. So that's really the, the, uh, what wound up going on. And then procedurally, what we did, and, and, you know, Bruce was on that board and, or that group. And we, um, go through and, and give just some discussion and, and had worked through some sample language. And, and really, we'd bounce ideas off and, and get as close as we could, and that's where we're at. We're as close as we can now.
Uh, with that, I guess, however the city council would like to proceed, I can go through these provisions, section by section, explain why it was that they were struck, um, and answer any questions as we go through it. Or however you'd like to proceed, um, if there are particular areas of interest that you have that you'd want us to highlight.
I will, I will mention that, you know, being a participant in this group for some time, and of course, the, it's how many years ago when we ran through that eighteen-month process? I just want to, uh, want to say, I just want the rest of the council members to know that one of the, one of the key issues I see that we are going to have to look at is what we want for volume, you know, the, the size, capability, and location. And with, with the whole concept that we cannot, we can't decide on what we want to do because it's off-premise anymore, because of the language, we have to, we have to make a decision. And, and I'll just make a real easy example. Say we were going to go on a, a stretch of Highway twenty. We look at Highway twenty, we say, well, what do we want? I mean, do we want more signs on it? Are we okay with more signs? So there's, I think we got to be careful, because there's got to be a balance between commerce, doing business in the community, and restricting for, for aesthetics. That, that's really kind of what we got to be looking at as we move forward with this thing. That's going to be a big decision. And I think a lot of the public input will help us with that decision, how to make that. But, you know, there's got to be that balance of restriction versus aesthetics. And I think, um, it may be something where, one of the thoughts that we had was maybe looking at individual zones, individual areas or thoroughfares, that we say, okay, we're going to be able to allow this many, this far apart, this size, you know?
I think to, to piggyback off of that point, we, we were at a point, uh, meeting a couple of times where we talked about, well, maybe we, we take a bite at figuring out what size and how many in this area and that area. And got to the point where we realized we're going to, we're going to be at this for a couple more years, and we're not going to have anyone involved in this if we're going to try and do that. The bottom line is, we need to go back, I was getting at it, we need to go back to the public, get a little information. If we wind up getting to a point where we find someone, we feel like maybe we've overstepped in some places, that's where the idea of overlay districts come into place, where you look at corridors and say, you know, we're okay with it here. But we don't want it to expand into this area or that. But that might be a second flush, it might be the first flush here.
Yeah, and it, to get to Councilman Buehler's point about that balance, it is a very difficult balance to achieve because of this US Supreme Court ruling. You know, looking at that ruling, which essentially set forth a very stringent criteria by which you can regulate any sign for content, on a content basis, makes it very tough. I mean, by that standard, in theory, it's possible that you can't regulate differences between even off-premise and on-premise signs. Because what's the distinguishing factor between off-premise and on-premise signs? The content.
To simplify, I, going into that, we, we've referenced the court case, basically, um, and I, you can correct me, but simplified down the court case, what it comes right down to is that signs are this. If you have to read the sign to regulate it, your rules aren't valid. And so...
And I think it's important, you know, that, that we move forward with this and get this sign going. You know, we're looking at Highway two twelve, a major, uh, work going to be done on that in, in two thousand nineteen and twenty-one. So we need to be ahead of that game also, so we can, so, so the landowners know what's going on also.
Great.
Luke, any idea when we're going to schedule our next meeting?
Um, I'm, you know, leave that open to how you, how you'd like to, or what your timeframe is. I'll, I'll leave it up to you guys.
I would just say, the sooner the better.
From, from a standpoint of rolling through this and, and finding information, do you want to know topical, or do you want to go line by line? How do you want to do this?
Right now?
Yeah.
Oh, Bruce. No, really, I, we don't have that tonight. I think, uh, I think what we're looking for here is the idea that we're working on this. And I really think, I really think that we need to get our group together. Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Well, I, I will ask, I will ask this. What did you, what did you intend to accomplish here this evening? Where did you want to be after that? Because if we go into the meeting, we're basically back where we were. What, what, what do you want to?
Well, realistically, and, and I, I'll tell you, uh, Justin led into categories of changes that we had. To dive in a little bit specifically without... To dive in a little bit specifically without actually reading through them, as he said, removing some duplicitous language, which was basically the approval mechanism that we already have in another section of ordinance. Limit, eliminate about two pages of ordinance based on that because we already have a, a building permit and board of adjustment process. There's the first standpoint. The other standpoint was a, was a portion on portable signs. And that was a little bit refining what was within there before. One of the changes that was, that was pretty well received within the, um, or brought up and well received within at least a subcommittee was the idea of moving those portable signs back closer to the building, requiring them to be within, I believe it was five feet of the building itself. And the idea from that group was that those portable signs are more intended to be for the people that are on the property, not for the passersby. The, uh, the next portion got into a lot larger scale discussion, but it wound up, because it got, it got into that large-scale discussion because of the national case that we dealt with. And in the end, the discussions worked all the way down to, while there wasn't necessarily consensus of whether or not we should or shouldn't stop based on off-premise, on-premise, what we did find was that there was a lot of consensus on the idea that there are definitely places where less signs might be more. And there was also indication where, um, there are just certain sizes in certain areas that wouldn't fit. And in the bottom line, it really didn't matter what was on them, it was more about the size and how many they were. So the idea with it was, um, just the, uh, one of the, and then one other concern or issue that was brought up was the idea of, of bare lots with, with billboards on them. And so one recommendation that comes out of that group is, is that signs become accessory use, as which means there has to be a building on site to have.
And, and I think, if, if I might, I think what we meant by, the extreme to that is that the only place you could have a sign for your business is adjacent to your business, correct? Okay. That's, that's the extreme. The other side would be to allow off-premise signs, you know? And one, one of the examples we had was if you had Joe's carpet and he's kind of off the beaten path, but he wants to put a sign somewhere, you know, it's to his benefit for commerce to be able to do that somewhere else in some instances. So, that's, that's one of the things. And, and I'm just going to suggest that we look at, maybe look at these thoroughfares. Unless anybody in the council objects to this, if you object to this, I think that we need to look at this and decide if we do want to set that up as a, if, if we want to leave it at just adjacent to the business or if we want to allow that in different locations in the community.
Guys, I've got a question. I, I pulled something out of the South Dakota Municipal League magazine from several months ago that referenced the Supreme Court case that you're referencing. And it says, and I'm quoting now, "To summarize a court's opinion in five words, sign codes must be content neutral." Okay, is that, I mean, can you explain that again?
Sure, sure. So, you know, using the visual that Luke had provided, so the idea is that a sign is anything written, any sort of symbology, anything conveying some kind of message. And it doesn't necessarily even have to be in words. So the idea is, once you're conveying a message, it is a form of speech. The question is, to what extent does the First Amendment apply? Well, when it comes to prior restraints of speech or regulations that restrain speech, you're effectively doing that by saying you can't put signs in certain places because the signs are speech. So the question is, to what extent can a government restrict speech? And what the Supreme Court said was essentially that when you're looking at the content of a sign to make your regulations, so treating a sign differently than another based upon the content of the sign, ergo speech, that you are engaged in a prior restraint of speech. And so a strict scrutiny test applies, meaning that you have to have a very, very good reason to regulate on that basis. Which means that you're going to have very few regulations that meet that requirement. Now, there is ambiguity, there is ambiguity with regard to on-premise versus off-premise. And Luke and I have gone back and forth in discussing this because one of the, uh, the opinions, not the majority, but a, a concurring opinion references that there indeed is a permissible distinction between on and off-premise signs that isn't content-based. But, as the municipal league pointed out, and as a number of commentators have pointed out, the majority could be read as saying, no content basis whatsoever, including the distinction between on and off-premise. But I would say that that ambiguity still exists, but we're just taking a very conservative approach in how we structure our ordinances, not knowing which way the court might ultimately fall on that.
And, and to that point, it comes back to that question of, if, if really the question is the number and the size of them, what does it really matter what's on them? And to that point, as, as Justin had said, a content-based, it basically means that if you have to read it to figure out what category it falls in, then your, your ordinance is probably content-based.
Right. Okay, thanks, gentlemen. I, I, before you leave, Luke, though, I, I would like, if you could, for the council here, and I know we're short, one sick, two on vacation tonight, but, um, could you touch base on, on, um, Ordinance sixty-five for, for our benefit as a city? How, how does this involve the city of Watertown and our businesses and things such as that that we're going through right now?
Sure.
I know it's a tough, tough subject. We're going to try to get together and do some, but I've got ten, fifteen minutes, if you want to share some time for us, not much more.
Well, I'll try not to fill it. You, you know me, I'll, I'll stop after two hours.
I do, but we're going to shut you down.
Oh, thank you.
Bam.
I, I really didn't come prepared with a lot, but the-
No, I understand, but there's things that you know that are straight up going to affect us.
I won't even dive into too far. Realistically, the first thing I'm going to tell you is, the county's asked me and I, I put together through my office at the, uh, with the county zoning office, um, a, an informational page on the county's website. And that is at the county's website, it's cottington.org. On the left-hand side of that page, there's a tab or a link that says Ordinance sixty-five Information. What that is, is information, just a, it's, it's intended to be a fact sheet of processes, how we got to this point. And then, and then some links. It's the document itself, it is presentations that, that the zoning office, state's attorney has delivered to the, um, the county commissioners, just kind of to inform about, realistically, what happens if we, if we go on one side or the other of the vote. Um, and I'll get into what that is in just a second here. There's also clips from, you know, you, you, you broadcast-
Can you put that up for us, Ray? I mean, it's the county, it's the county website.
Yeah, I'll pull it up here quick.
Okay. Somebody get it up there for us.
Let's really hope it works. There we go. And so, I'm at the county's homepage and you scroll down to Other Information and there's Ordinance sixty-five information. And as I said on here, it's got just some fact sheet information in terms of that and that's what I'll speak off of here for just a minute. Uh, but I'll just show you where some of the links are as you go down. What it is, I put on links to the meetings where this ordinance has been discussed at the county commission level. Since the county started having meetings on YouTube, that's where each of these comes from. And so, that's where the link is. And then also, just for those who don't love to sit through full government meetings, I also pointed out where it starts, just to save some people an hour and a half of listening to things they don't care as much about. So, what Ordinance sixty-five is, excuse me, uh, the county went through, is involved in a lawsuit with some individuals about a, about a permit the county issued for a feedlot. We're going to be two years into that here in a month or so. Initially, the county's permit, issuing the permit was upheld. Uh, there was a supplemental decision issued that came out in late November that indicated, uh, first of all, that a process that the county had used in adopting ordinances, um, in particular, the zoning ordinance in two thousand six, was, uh, not done according to state law. The county is appealing that decision. However, uh, one thing that is worth noting, I guess, before I get into that, the, um, that decision was made, however, the judge said that the ordinance, taking that ordinance out and looking at the ordinance underneath, you're familiar with this, but basically the lines that you get there, the additions or subtractions to an ordinance just go to the old ordinance before. So the point is, if we took away the changes that were made on Ordinance thirty, the ordinance that you were using county underneath that still would have rendered your decision valid, is what the judge said. So the opposition on that is appealing that portion. The county is appealing the portion on, um, on their adoption practice. And in the meantime, as soon as that decision came out, it was shortly thereafter that the state's attorney and chairman of the planning commission and county commission instructed this, my, me as a zoning officer to publish notice to re-adopt all of the ordinances that the county had adopted since two thousand one. Because at the time, the county knew that there were probably other ones as well that had been adopted similarly. And frankly, they needed to do business, issue permits for houses and since those rules had been on the books, figured that people would be used to them, that's the best way to handle things. So that's what the county did. They re-adopted the rules that they had in Ordinance sixty-five. There were no changes or additions to any of them, but they re-adopted the rules with Held the public hearings, um, had one individual show up at a planning commission meeting and address the board and nobody at the, uh, county commission meeting and adopted it and then it was referred. That ordinance was referred. And so now, where we're at is Ordinance sixty-five was referred. And so what the county's doing now is, uh, they asked me to go back through and look at, okay, what other ordinances were adopted similarly to that one. And so what the state's attorney has, has stated is that, um, basically the roadmap's out there to appeal any decision that the county issues. And furthermore, the roadmap's out there, if there's, um, if there's, someone gets a permit that's based on a rule that may have been improperly adopted, there's also proceedings to, um, say that the county should stop that as well. There's the ability out there as well. But what the county did is adopted a moratorium in the end here, where we said is there's a moratorium on any rules that were adopted in the manner similar to what the judge said we shouldn't have done. There were thirty ordinances like that of the forty that we had adopted. Thankfully, uh, with regards to how that affects the area as far as the county around the city of Watertown, you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we adopted joint jurisdiction ordinances. The area affected by joint jurisdiction ordinance, that was adopted in a fashion that would pass that test or that question. So, the point is, anything in that joint jurisdiction area was made whole. And so-
So, so that question being, you know, when, when we start talking about flood insurance for people on Lake Pelican, are they, are they okay? Or, or do they have the issue with FEMA also then with the, with the, the insurance for their properties?
So, the, the short answer is, no, they're not okay. Um, the, uh, what has happened is, um, they actually, they get kind of a double whammy in that. Because what winds up happening, one of those ordinances, as, as Mayor had alluded to, was the floodplain ordinance that the county had adopted. Regulations really didn't change that much, but, um, in two thousand nine, as with the city, the flood map changed. And we re-adopted that in that time and it was done in a similar fashion. And so, uh, what happens is, the, in the joint jurisdiction area, we do have a floodplain regulation. However, the way that, the way that it's been explained to me is that basically, it would be looked at as we're picking and choosing where we're going to handle it as a county. And so FEMA does not play by that. And if you're not going to have it for the whole county, then you're not going to have it. And, uh, I had received a letter, uh, the zoning office had received a letter from FEMA Region Eight Office indicating numerous issues, um, that would arise if the ordinance was repealed. And, uh, one of those, a couple of those included, you know, no, no public assistance money, particularly if there's a flood. Now, I want to keep in, I want you to keep in mind, that is for the unincorporated areas of the county. That does not affect city limits within the city of Watertown. However, in the rural areas, that does. Um, I just received a phone call today from an individual who had contacted his banker just to see if it would affect him and he was informed today that his mortgage would not be valid anymore. And so it will have a major impact on him and I guess he had, his advice was that others should check too, if they live on Lake Pelican especially. So, uh, going down that rabbit hole, that's what, uh, that's what we found with regards to that. But that was, that was what, the ones I was going to mention. There's floodplain ordinances, one, that's an issue. Uh, there's Joy Ranch, the ability to have Joy Ranch was one of those ordinances. The permit that issued for that would be considered invalid if Ordinance sixty-five were repealed. There was a fertilizer plant north of Wallace, um, that also is in the same boat, about a six million dollar plant, that would also be considered non-conforming. Um, and, uh, there's a couple other issues that are, uh, interesting in terms of, in terms of actual dollars and cents that may be generated from construction and that's, uh, the, the ability to build garages, which may seem innocuous, but it was added to the ordinance at that timeframe. So the only place before, um, before that timeframe that was allowed to have a garage or a shed was on a farm. Um, that ability was obviously added and with repeal of that ordinance would take away the ability to have a garage on a non-farm dwelling. And so garages, sheds would not be allowed to be permitted. Uh, then the other one that comes up is, um, I just had this conversation with a builder today. Uh, the county has a process, if someone wants to build a house, live in their house and then, and then, um, build a new one, tear down the old one, um, that's, the ability to do that was added as well at that timeframe, so in two thousand six. So, again, that's one of those that would also be repealed.
But as an example, if we have a cashway or, or a lumberyard that builds houses and they move these houses onto the farms, what I'm understanding is that, that, that can't happen right now.
It's, that's pretty much right. The one that's going to be a bigger deal is going to be the home builders that build on site. Because those are the projects that take the longest. Um, I, like I said, that particular builder knew of, one example off the top of his head of one that he had done in the past. And I'll tell you, right now, I had to call an individual today and tell him, because he wanted to do that, and I had to tell him that, uh, he will not have that option right now because, uh, right now with the referral, we don't have that option and depending on how the vote goes, he may either have to take down his house before he builds or, um, find another way.
When is the vote, Luke?
The vote is March twenty-seventh. Um, and again, uh, the way that it's explained to me and the, the sample ballot will come out here soon, but a yes vote will, um, retain the ordinances that we've had for all that amount of time. That, that would be in favor of Ordinance sixty-five. A no vote would be, um, would take away Ordinance sixty-five and would put us back to, and I don't want to make it sound like we're going to the dark ages, we're not going to the dark ages of zoning, but it would take us back to the rules we had in two thousand one. From a standpoint of going forward, the county's been planning on doing an ordinance update this year and was frankly, planning on having a scoping meeting in February after this was adopted. Of course, we've had to move timeframes back. Realistically, what will happen is after the election, if Ordinance sixty-five, I anticipate, and I've got to run this by the planning commission, but I, I, what I've been told, uh, is that the intent is that if Ordinance sixty-five is upheld, then we probably hold a scoping meeting and start the process in April. If the ordinance is repealed, um, then first item of business will be to get, um, floodplain ordinance in, in effect. Um, I don't know if that will help those individuals though that have that. The person who talked to me sounded like, um, it'll be pulled at that time and, and it may not help him if we go back. But again, that's through them. I don't know that process that well. Um, but again, realistically, from a standpoint of ordinance adoption, it probably pushes us back about six months, the amount of time it'll take us to kind of try and fix, patch some of those holes to be able to do business, just let people build stuff. People will be out for a year.
Question for you. If, uh, if it goes down and then all those ordinances are no longer valid, you said it goes back to two thousand one zoning ordinances?
That's correct. And, and it was because of the, the judge's decision, there was no contest, there was no, that was not contested.
And again, I know you're not, you said we're not going back to the dark ages, but it sounds like there's a potential then for a lot of litigation to pop up. Anything that was disputed and built between now and then, there could be a lot of litigation that arises from that.
That's correct.
So like the fertilizer planted by Wallace, would that, at that point, have to cease and desist?
No, they would not. It would be essentially considered a non-conforming use. Um, same as Joy Ranch would be the same. But the, the good news is that they don't have to cease and desist. Bad news is, is that they're at the whim of the next tornado.
Yep.
Or in a case like that, they're at the whim of a.
Fire explosion.
Kind of deal like that.
Luke, out of curiosity, what, what's this referral going to cost? And do you have sort of an estimated cost to the county? Let me finish the, the cost to the county for making these revisions if we do move forward, having to revise all of those ordinances?
To revise and update the ordinances, you're saying if, if it's repealed?
I'm just curious, yeah. If it's repealed, what would the cost be?
If it's repealed, if it's repealed or if it's upheld, the pro, the, the cost will wind up being on the surface about the same. The cost is coming in on the cost of the election itself. In all reality, it's a, a last estimate was somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. But from the standpoint of updating it, it, it probably won't cause a ton of dollars, assuming there are no lawsuits involved. Um, if something bad comes up, then, then I don't know what the answer is to that question.
I have one more question. How does this, this whole situation, does this relate at all to the, the city planning? For our own city planning operations? Are there, is there anything we need to be looking at from our planning commission's standpoint in ordinance adoption, uh, that we could run into trouble with?
It was a very, it's a very good question. And I thank you for asking that because it lets me actually address what that procedural issue was. The short answer is no. And the reason is because the statutes are different for county versus city. In the, uh, city standpoint, the adoption of an ordinance has one statute that says a planning commission shall hold a public hearing with ten days' notice. The next one says the city council shall hold a public hearing with ten days' notice. And the county statute that says, and I, again, I, please, don't take this as any legal interpretation, but I've read enough of these, the, the decision to be able to follow through some of it. And I, I'm just kind of regurgitating what our state's attorney had said. But the, the statute references, and I'm going to simplify it, maybe even butcher it, but it says, sentence one, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing before adopting, before recommending approval. Sentence two, the city, or the county commission shall hold a public hearing prior to first reading, second reading and approval of an ordinance, period. Third sentence, the public hearing shall be noticed with ten days' notice. And the question is what that S means. Because what the, uh, long line of county states attorneys have, have said is that that S references the planning commission's public hearing and the county commission's public hearing. And the court case contention is that it, um, if you held a public hearing, each time you held one, you needed to have a public hearing. And in that case, the county held a joint public hearing and then someone came to another meeting and they opened it up for someone to talk and they hadn't noticed it that way. And so that's, bottom line, that's what the question is. So the answer is, it's different in the city.
Luke, it's probably understood, but I've had a couple of people ask me this, so please clarify, we as citizens of Watertown uh, are able to vote or are, will be asked to vote in this election?
That's correct. The citizens of Watertown will be asked to vote. Will, will have the opportunity to vote.
Well, thank you very, very much. It was, um, something I know we've had a lot of questions on as, as a group. And I think the people in town have had a lot of questions. And I, I know I didn't prepare, have you get it prepared for this, but you did a great job. So thanks, Luke, very much for being here. All right. Okay, at this time, I will adjourn this meeting. We'll be back at seven o'clock for the, uh, city council meeting.